Prior to that was some visioning of the city. And it actually started with council in the Centennial Room with a whiteboard and the mayor drawing, where's the mayor?
Right.
Basically, the mayor. The mayor and council coming up was they wanted to see it occur through their tenure as council and the mayor. We started in the awareness space. We formed committees. We had over 100 people join those committees. We reviewed the existing conditions. We got a public survey. We had about 600 responses on that. We drafted our preliminary goals and objectives and then presented to the public in January of 2018. That followed up with the exploration where we tested the ideas and opportunities. And again, we presented to the public. That was in June of this past year. And then we're finishing up the vision, which was refining of those goals and objectives. And actually, we put together what we believe is the draft of the Fort Thomas Community Plan. It's about 225 pages and it's scattered throughout the room. It's also available on the project's website, which is http://com communityplan.com. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, I would encourage you to do that. You know, and the final step is the approval. So tonight, tonight is the Planning Commission's public hearing of the community plan and to receive comment from the attendees. So we're going to try to keep this as a free presentation. After that, we're going to stop for a few minutes. Planning Commission has some things to set up. It also gives, after the presentation, it gives all of you the opportunity to review the plan if you would like to. And then we're going to come back and open up the Planning Commission's public hearing. So this project started with six committees. They're in a little bit different order than what's just previously been shown, and that's just for the flow of this presentation. But it was the utilities, the city-owned facilities, transportation, parks and open space, regional collaboration, land use and zoning, and then finally, our funding and implementation. Again, six committees. We had over 100 people join them. We met anywhere from once or twice a month or between September and June of this past year. So these are high-level overarching recommendations that kind of surfaced to the top through our lots of meetings. So in the utilities and city-owned facilities chapters, we start with utilities and technology. So those overarching, high-level recommendations that came out of this plan are continue to provide and maintain all essential utility services. The city is already going this way, which is why it says continue, to encourage sustainable practices. And really, for the city to lead by example. You know, this can be anywhere from installing LED lights, whether that's in their buildings or in the streets. It can be adding motion sensors to their lighting. So that way, they're not on all the time, they're only on when somebody's there. It can go further than that, and it can be some kind of, you know, some kind of monitoring station that once a renovation is complete, you could have a review of what the energy cost or energy consumption was compared to what the energy cost and energy consumption is today. But again, the goal is for the city to lead this by example. Others include improve stormwater quality and reduce quantity as opportunities arise. Coordinate with utilities on city infrastructure projects. Again, that's a continue. The city already does that. It gives the utilities an opportunity to come in, review their infrastructure before any kind of street program occurs, get cuts out of the way, get new water mains in, gas mains. A lot of you have probably witnessed this, if you guys have been in the city for a while. And then the last one is continue to engage the water district in conversations to review options for opening up the walking paths along the reservoir. These are continuing conversations. One of my favorite comments that Ron always mentions is that the answer is still no. It's just not hell no. So we're working on that. From a technology perspective, promote technology within our community so that it parallels the needs of our citizens. We have a school district that has basically gone to a one-to-one ratio, and is the city providing the technology to back that up. Basically, become best-in-class when it comes to technology. Associated with that, it's to develop a smart city plan and team with our neighbors to create a smart corridor. Some of the other committees will talk about this smart corridor, but it's something that's already started, and we're working through Highland Heights down to Newport on Route 27. So the other portion of this committee was city-owned facilities. So it starts very broad with maximize the utilization of the city-owned facilities, as well as developing a facilities improvement plan. That facilities improvement plan can help the city to age plus or either maintenance, replacement, or renovations slash expansion, and allow them to, you know, basically budget for roof replacements, or HVAC replacements, or again, a renovation. So within that improvement plan, the preliminary recommendations for the four buildings that we studied, which it was the city building, which the city building is geographically and administratively the center of the city. And then we looked at the mess hall, which is where we're standing at, and the armory, and the Staples Building. The city doesn't own the Staples Buildings, but you know, these are historically significant structures in our community. I think that a lot of people feel a sense of stewardship to maintain them, to make sure that they're, you're still standing, 50 years from now, they're still well-maintained, once they go out of disrepair. I don't know that the support footage associated with these structures can be replicated at a cost that the city can afford. So it's important to, it's important to plan for their maintenance and improvements. So looking at the structures that we study, we basically came up with some preliminary recommendations. One is to upgrade the city building complex with facade improvements, space planning for administration, and providing public meeting space in there, as well as 24/7 restroom access. Again, it's the center of the city. There's no reason why somebody wouldn't be able to use it for a meeting or stop in and use the restroom when they're not on call. You know, the second one that just kept surfacing was to continue dialogue with the Army National Guard regarding the acquisition of the Staples Building. Not everybody who was on the committee was available for the meeting, and we actually had to go into the Staples Building, but it was pretty cool to go in there and see that building. We're standing in the mess hall. It's great space. What if we could expand the space? You know, move additional meeting space in the back. This is a big room. It doesn't accommodate all sizes. A group of 20 doesn't fit very well in here. And then, the Armory Building, you know, we looked at that building as well. Open up the entrance of the Armory Building and enhance the first floor space. So the other two that came out of this group was coordinate facilities planning with other community groups. Is there any way to co-locating or sharing functions? The city is already going that in some of the parks with some of the sports facilities as they're shared with the school district. And then lastly, is to improve and enhance the city, let's say. You're going to hear from all of us, so I'm going to pass it on to Robert for the next section.
So the committee that I was kind of tasked with running was the transportation connectivity portion. With this, this chapter is broken down by four major goals that we had identified. The first goal really focuses on trying to maintain and improve our existing infrastructure. So that's our existing sidewalks and be prepared to make sure that they stay in compliance with the A requirements. The streets through our street programs with resurfacing and reconstruction. The crosswalks, making sure that we improve the visibility of these sidewalks and the safety, provide different measures such as signage, pavement marking, lighting. And then also, improve entries to parks and schools. An example of this is the concept that we're looking at for James Avenue, to create a new entrance to the park there and get people that are going to the park off of Mayfield. The second goal is to make it easy and enticing to move around the city. To do this, we're looking at gateways, key entries. Gateways are more than just signs and landscape, and there are a lot of factors that go into it that give travelers a sense of space and what the community is all about. So it's important to kind of get something there that makes them aware that they are in the city of Fort Thomas. City of Fort Thomas can be a little bit challenging in some areas to navigate, so wait line signage can play an important part, allows people that have all different modes of transportation, whether they're driving, walking, riding a bike, allows them to get to key destinations such as the school, city building, parks. It also allows for opportunities to let people know where parking is in our business districts. Additionally, for the past 18 years, the city's been working on a streetscape primarily in and around the business districts. Part of our plan is to continue to do the streetscape work in between these districts on these major routes and corridors to give it a nice, cohesive feel. Our third goal focuses on encouraging active forms of transportation, so that you're walking and you're biking. So part of that is to fill some of the gaps in our sidewalk network. The ones that have been identified as high priority were North Fort Thomas, Covert Run, Chesapeake, Army Reserve Road, and Sargent Avenue. Ambition Bike lanes and share roads. This provides a place for cyclists to ride on the road. This can be accomplished by either, bike lanes can be accomplished by either reducing driving lane width or even sometimes reducing the number of lanes to create what is commonly referred to as a road diet. Bike racks throughout the city allow for people riding bikes to have a place to leave their bikes for a short period of time. Bike rentals such as Redbike allow for people without bikes to have an opportunity to enjoy the same experience. Another item that we identified as having rest areas available, so places with benches, water fountains, trash receptacles. This can allow for pedestrians to take a break when they're traveling throughout the city, and could potentially lead to them going further distances than what they would have prior. And then our final goal was to improve the access to the riverfront. The city has such a large amount of riverfront and it's being underutilized. Part of this would involve reclassifying the, reclassification of Mary Angles Highway, which is route 8. This is actually already in the process, and KYTC is already working on reclassifying this road. We want to reclassify it so that way it can create more of a park-type road feel. And additional, new pedestrian cycling paths. That will, probably, new pedestrian cycling paths will allow for pedestrian cyclists to get down to the riverfront edge and get them off of some of the major roadways such as River Crest. And this gives them a safer option and helps out on the major roadways as well. Improvements can also lead to water recreational opportunities, including kayaking and canoeing down the river. And then finally, creating parking at these particular nodes strategically throughout the corridor creates trailheads and also provides locations for pedestrians to be able to cross over Mary and Eagles Highway, which currently there's not a lot of safe places to do so. I will now pass it off to the Parks and Open Spaces.
Good evening. I'm Chris Manning with Human Nature. And before I go into the detail, I just wanted to thank all the people that worked on the Parks and Open Space Committee. It was a very large group, a very energetic group, lots of ideas, lots of hard work, and this is your, this is your work. And there's some really exciting ideas here. And one of the things that really came out at the beginning was Fort Thomas is really a city and a park, and we'd like to maintain that kind of characteristic. And so our trees, our canopy, our hillside greenbelt network that you see in green there is something that we need to protect, it's something that we need to connect. We also have a lot of community assets that we need to better connect, and that's where our work and the transportation and connectivity work comes in. And so you see strategies in the map to better connect our schools, to better connect our parks through trails, improve sidewalks, and some of the things that Ron just described. A lot of discussion too about enhancements throughout our park system, improved playground structures, more wellness programming, programming room for all age groups, things such as that came out consistently throughout all of our parks. Better online scheduling for rentals and fields was another. More opportunities for volunteering and participating in park activities and trail cleanups and honeysuckle removal and all those types of things. Because we have a very active citizenry here, and people want to pitch in. And so making it easy for that to happen is something that we can always improve on. And then really allocating budget for parks, for operations, for staff, for events, things that everybody wants. It won't show up if we don't have it. So moving into a little more specifics, you know, again, I think one of the real, really exciting, big ideas that came out was the notion of our riverfront. I think everyone agreed that it was an underutilized asset. It was an asset that's not well-connected. And so the big idea that you see in the map over there is what if we think about the riverfront and the hillside greenbelt as one giant park? And if we slow traffic down on Route 8, and we create, pull off nodes for parking and crossings and maybe stops, we could connect our assets on the hill with the assets down at the river, and really create a network of park assets that also include, as Rob was saying, canoe and kayak launches. So what you see there is a series of nodes along Mary Angles Highway where you could stop, you could park, and you could get on a bike, or you could start jogging, or you could get in the water. And so you can imagine almost your own triathlon, right? Where you could do a circuit of any length, you could go up the hill, you could come and down hill. And so we looked at strategic points of connection, and the two big ones really related to Tower Park where we are and coming up this valley. We already have an old road bed that we can utilize. There's already a trail that we can build upon. The other big asset in the center of town was the Highlands Campus. Beautiful valley there, it's part of a nature preserve. There's already the makings of a rustic trail there as well. And so it's connecting our assets on the top of the hill with the assets on the river. And then some really exciting ideas about particulars, you know, how do we do crossings? How do we do parking that's site-sensitive? And then some other things like how do we introduce the idea of being able to spend the night in a rustic setting? You know, could we have some glamping down by the river? I know there's already some camping that's occurring down at the Aqua Ramp. They might be a logical partner, talked about and met with them, talked to them. But the idea of being able to spend the night out camping, glamping near the river is pretty And then working our way down through the park system, Rossford Park, you know, again, it was recently updated, in good shape, but the loop, a lot of discussion about we could make more use of the loop, more wellness programming, and maybe some exercise stations as part of the loop there at Rossford Park, shade structure playground. Highland Hills Park, some new ideas there is the new entrance to James, really taking the burden of all that peak traffic off of Mayfield residents and bringing it in James, where there's no residential impacts. And coming in, and then a new feature that was talked about is the idea of a spray ground in the lower area below the big shelter where the tennis courts and the same volley lawn, things like that have been. So it's adjacent to the swim club where there's already aquatic activities in our mind, but it would be in the park there and it would offer a place for families. And these were some of the preferred images that came out of that exercise there. Improvements to the dog park, improvements to the trails there, some other things that people talked about in Highland Hills. And then we transitioned over to Tower Park. And again, Tower Park has so many wonderful things going on, but two or three big ideas that came out of that. One was the connectivity to and from the riverfront. And you could see that ends up in sort of a triangular loop that connects all the major assets of Tower Park. And then some of the new ideas that came out, one was a bike park, which one of the things that we learned is a very high percentage of BMX bikes that are sold in Kentucky are sold to Fort Thomas children. And yet they really have no place to really learn how to, how to use unless they get in a car and travel quite some distance. So there's some organizations like Cincinnati Off-Road Alliance, Kentucky Mountain Viking Association, who'd like to partner with the city and do a small bike park here where they can teach children how to learn how to mount a bike safely, learn how to repair the bikes. And we found a nice little spot over at Tower Park where that could happen. And then the other big idea that came out was something that's synergistic with the mess hall, and that is the idea of a zip line and ropes course behind us here in the wooded edge that we have. And so for team building exercises, family reunions, corporate hours, if you're renting this space, you could have a companion use of the zip line and tree ropes course right behind us on the hillside there, very accessible. So those are some exciting big ideas. And then I'll hand it off to Sarah for the regional.
All right. The Regional Partnerships Committee really sought to identify opportunity to collaborate with our original partners and really, and do so on some of the good ideas that the other committees have identified. We just listed a few here. The rest are obviously in the report and on our board that you can look at. Some of the examples, the committee really discussed, one was Route 8, Route of Front Greenway toward north, and really partnering with some of these logical stakeholders and collaborators, KYTC, the railroad, the Water and Stock Trust and property, and South Bank, and as well as private property owners down along the river. Another project that the committee talked about and identified opportunity, the Tower Park Greenway Connection that was mentioned in the Parks Committee, really partnering with KYTC and KU and the railroad to implement that trail up through the corridor up to Tower Park. A third project that was discussed, Route 27, Economic Development Smart City Corridor. The committee really highlighted this opportunity. We met with several stakeholders, several regional partners, regional, local neighbors, Highland Heights, Southgate, Campbell County, Newport, NCU, St. Elizabeth, some of these great partners that could help shape the vision for this corridor. And then the last one we have here, actually, some of that within the Parks and Green Space Opportunities, we're partnering with the Conservancy District and Hillside Trust on the Hillside Greenbelt, the preservation, restoration of the greenbelt, and partnering with the City of Dayton on Sargent Park, collaborating with Southgate on Evergreen Cemetery, and really enhancing that asset as a community, a local and a regional asset. And then working with Highland Heights on St. Stephen Cemetery and Veterans Park, again, to enhance those green space assets for the local region.
Hello. So I am Chris Hopkins, and I worked with a large group of residents and interested persons on land use and zoning. And so land use and zoning broke into, our conversation broke into basically four areas. Do you hear me? This is our areas.
That is probably.
Okay. So the four, the topics are quality of life, natural resource preservation, housing in neighborhoods.
And economic development and business district.
So the quality of life issues, I can speak for you louder. The quality of life issues, I mean, what we heard a lot during our committee meetings was that the quality of life is already pretty high in Fort Thomas, and that it draws a lot of people here, and you're pretty much nearly all built out as well. And so the goal for the next 10 years or so is to make sure the city stays that way and gets even better. And so part of that is looking at the zoning code and other codes to make sure the zoning code is responsive to the needs of improvements that people make through their houses and their business properties, as well as making sure properties are well-maintained. And then also, we talked a lot about expanding use of design guidelines, so that new development that does occur does respect the character that's already here in the city. And then what, another very important point was continuing local efforts and historic preservation because there is a lot of history in the city. Under natural resources, and you'll get to see there's a lot of overlap with parks and open space and regional collaboration, but we did talk about the red belt and making sure that the hillsides are, continue to be well-protected. And we also talked about the city's tree planting program and enhancing that because the trees really contribute to the character of the city. And then making sure that new development does incorporate some of these natural features into the actual design of the project. From a residential and neighborhood standpoint, we had basically three ideas: continued investments, continuing to encourage investments in the neighborhoods, increasing housing options for one and two smaller households, and enhancing the visual appearances. So continued investments, making sure that, again, the zoning code is responsive and allows people to add onto their houses in a, in a manner that's compatible with the neighborhood, and making sure that any new development on the scattered vacant lots that are around the city, that any new development that occurs is compatible in a similar size and amount of open space and setback from the street, so that new construction does fit in. We had a lot of conversation about new housing, and as I mentioned, you're nearly built out, and so there's not a whole lot of places where you can have new housing, but there are concerns that people who have lived there, here their whole life and raised a family, they need a place to downsize and they want to stay within the city. And so thinking about where new housing can occur. And two ideas were right above storefronts in the, in the business districts, and then also nearby in the business districts, and trying to see if there are places for smaller households where new housing can be constructed. And then enhancing the visual appearance, again, as I mentioned, with design guidelines and making sure that there is a strong identity through trees and public art and that. And then our fourth area was business districts and economic well-being. And you have some well-developed business districts, and the idea is to continue to make sure they remain compact, walkable, and meeting the needs of the community. And we identified the town center as a family-oriented district near the school places, so we should have places for convenience, retail, things like that, restaurants. But we acknowledged too that the Midway District right around here, there's a lot entertainment-wise that's going on, and so to build on Midway as that sort of entertainment recreation district. And then Inverness and Highland as secondary districts, but still important to recognize that they meet the needs of residents. I mean, in terms of high-quality economic development in the key locations, the idea is, I mean, we heard, using US 27, Alexandria, Pye. heard, using US 27 Alexandria Pike as a primary economic development corridor and making sure especially that Fort Thomas, continued investments occur in Fort Thomas Plaza. And then finally, also in business districts, making sure that the visual appearance is enhanced, again, through expanded design guidelines and making sure that natural areas along the Laurel Parkway and River Road are preserved. And then finally developing a branding strategy so that each of the districts becomes well-known and there's a, you have an image when somebody talks about Midway or Town Center or Alexandria Pike. And then the last thing that I wanted to talk about was, we had six committees, you're going to hear from the last one, funding and implementation after this, but the five of us that were talking about planning elements, and you noticed there was a lot of overlap. And then what ended up happening is we decided to have a separate chapter in the plan that addressed these quote focus areas. So we have four areas, the town center, Midway area, Tower Park, Alexandria Pike, and the riverfront freeway, that this part of the plan takes all of the elements from transportation, land use, open space preservation, and city buildings to fall into the utilities. And we bring them together in each of these areas and we consolidate all of those particular recommendations so that when the city wants to concentrate improvements on Town Center or Midway, that we have that particular chapter to refer to. So with that, I'll turn it over to Rob for pointing.
So Rob, you're going to pay for it all.
I will say, early on in the process, this committee that I was kind of leading was difficult to get a lot of engagement because we had to wait until all these exciting goals and recommendations came out of the other committees. And but I am pleased to say, as Mary, you said, we're at this point now where we can implement. And this is what we really, this committee, towards the end of this process, had to take all those ideas, all those goals, recommendations, and try to determine how we're going to fund them and how we're going to implement them. And again, there were many, many goals and recommendations, you've heard. It was really neat to see that a lot of committees, although they were working on their own ideas, there's so much overlap. And so as we put this implementation plan together, you'll see this in the chapter and in the structured format of the implementation plan. We've referenced where you see these in the different committees and you'll see sometimes it's referenced three times in three different chapters because it just ties everything together. But really the goal of the implementation plan is we had to establish a concrete way to implement for that actions of the other ideas, the goals, to be implemented and really to hold the city and the partners that we recommend can lead those ideas, hold them accountable for this kind of time schedule, a timeframe. There's a lot of implementation tools that can be used, the zoning codes, subdivision regs, design guidelines. Now I will say that out of the goals and recommendations this committee planned, those groups, regulatory tools, will help to implement that, but they have to set their own criteria that they're going to come up, bring out of these goals and ideas. Public infrastructure improvements, all the improvements that can happen in the city coming out of these goals are going to be implemented in phases by potentially the different city work, city department work plans. Another key aspect is the partnerships and this was shown several times, that we have the partners inside the city, but you have your outside partners too, different agencies, different entities, different communities, the surrounding communities are all going to be partners in seeing our plan coming through issue. And again, to get back to the bottom line, you can do all this, all the great ideas, but you have to have a way to fund the project. And there's many different types of funding sources available out there. We've identified a lot, but not all, in the plan today. Some of the funds, this is not the complete list, local funds, that's your real estate taxes, your income tax, income taxes, user fees that come to the city. That's kind of a fixed amount, so if we want to grow and see some of these great ideas come to the forefront, you've got to look at some other ways. And that could be different intergovernmental agency programs, different government agencies that have funding sources available. One in particular is looking at the Kentucky Transportation Council, trying to get road improvement dollars through federal monies, federal grants. Public-private partnerships, that's really key. We've got the public side of this equation, but we really need to reach out to the private partners that can help bring additional dollars to see these projects occur. TIF districts, tax increment financing, where you can establish a district and take what real estate taxes were coming based on what was there today, enhance it and you take the new tax revenue from the increased value and bring that in to pay for the public infrastructure improvements. Special taxing districts, you can actually take an area like Central Business District or the Midway District and that area can bring additional funds just from their properties that can do enhancements to that district that's established. The city does have the ability to establish municipal bonding to fund projects. And there's so many different types of private grant opportunities that are available. Just take some research, try to find that opportunity. So through many, many months and many committee meetings and public engagement process, if you came to the June public meeting that we had, we have the implementation schedule and here's a copy of it here, where we ask people to rank what they thought was important. And this was really key because our committee took those ideas and those rankings that the community told us and it applied that to the implementation schedule, the implementation plan. So that matrix was really key to helping us come to the final version, what we have in the final committee plan is on those two boards, boards in the back that you'll be able to look at here in a second. So this is a little bit tough to see, but I just want to show you that the five different chapters are broken down by color on the boards and in the final report, we have the land use zoning chapter, we have transportation, we have parks and open spaces, and they're red and the city of facilities and utilities is green, and then the regional partnerships is blue. And those are on the board. So this is depicting what you can view. So what's going to happen next is we've gotten through the discussion of what has happened with the community plan. As Frank mentioned, we're going to take about 15 minutes for the planning commission to get set up for the official public hearing. This will give everybody an opportunity to, again, walk around, look at some copies of the plans that are laid out on the table, look at the previous display boards that have been shown at previous public meetings, and the two new boards for the implementation plan that you can look at to get some of the specific ideas. Anything else in these that's covered? So with that, we will adjourn for about 15 minutes. Please feel free to run around, stay because we'd love to have you be here for the actual public hearing.
If the planning commission members could sit down.
So I am going to go ahead and introduce everybody to the planning commission. And here we have Larry Schultz, we have Tim Michaels, we have the chairman who is Dan Saylor, and we have Jerry Doran. Missing is Dave Warne, Dan Norman, and Hans Tinkler. Our seven members. Do you guys want to go ahead?
Sorry to do our attention. All right.
It'd be in the third. First thing on our September 26th.
Okay, seems like we're going to approve the amendments on our September 26th, 2019.
And on those two, approve the amendments as drafted in the September meetings, including the readoptions of the, see we've got our goals, goals, objectives, as we had approved them last time, with the amendments that have been made since then.
Remove the second, will we remove the amendments, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, second item we're going to do is we're going to reschedule our November meeting. Our normal Wednesday meeting falls the day before Thanksgiving, so I'd like a motion to remove it to November 14th of the week. Motion to second, all in.
Aye.
Okay, well, thank all our people for their presentation tonight. And now we will open the floor to our public. Okay, this is your time to come forward, identify yourselves just for the record so we can record it. We'd like your comments. You've had time to see them tonight. Most of you were probably here last month. They're online or sometimes so you can be able to read our documents, our comments. So who wants to start?
I do. Okay. How are you going to stand up? Carol Beenharn, Harno Avenue, Florida, Georgia. Four quick questions on James Avenue, one of Ohio Parks. Somebody really told me they're going to have to like tear down a house by James Avenue and build a new road, fill in that gully, go all the way up to the park. That's about a half mile. That sounds really offensive and a lot of dirt. I'd like to see us think about that a little bit. Second thing is Garden Park. I talked to Ron Dill before the meeting. He said we were talking with David about maybe negotiate the deal or whether we could split up the cost for rehab or if we could buy the whole place, you know, clean that up because it looks like a prison down there and it is pretty neat down there in the woods. The third thing is, I looked at that map over there, we have multifamily on there. I don't want to see that get any bigger. I hate multifamily when you see it on the zoning. It just screwed up the neighborhood and the public from the town. So I'd like to see less multifamily zoning and more residential. Never gets better, they only pay the family of workers. Is that collaborative, tax-based funding? I talked to Skyward here and he said we might have to like raise taxes a little bit on the people that are in the business district to help pay for some of the sidewalk trees or whatever we're approving. Then sometimes it's hard to get businesses in there, we've got to give them a tax break. You know, it gets kind of confusing to raise your taxes, but if you give them a tax incentive, you know, you know what I mean? It gets really screwed up. So your guys are doing a good job, be trusted with our money and hope it will work.
Hi, my name is Ashley Barlow. I live on Sweetbrier. I'm an attorney in town and my office is on Memorial Parkway. And I am speaking from a couple of different interests. I'm speaking first as a resident of Sweetbrier. I'd also like to address some issues that I consider to be pretty significant relative to the James Avenue proposal and its ADA compliance. And I'll also speak as a swim club member and as a Moyer parent. So a lot of my neighbors from Sweetbrier and Highland Avenue are here. Maybe we can all just stand up. I am representing every resident on Sweetbrier. We're all in red because Sweetbrier is sweet. And, or we tried to wear red. Okay, you guys can get comfortable now. And I am, and I'm speaking on behalf of everybody that lives on Sweetbrier with the exception of one house. So what our neighborhood, we are opposed to the project on James Avenue primarily because of the safety of our children, but also because of our property interests. So we significantly take issue with the statement that is said expressly in the presentation that there's no residential impact with the James Avenue proposal. So first of all, I think it impacts the safety of our kids. Our kids play, I live, I'm an aunt of her house, so I live on the Edward side of Sweetbrier, but my children play in the woods on Sweetbrier and I know that many of our kids do play in the woods. And if they come up, there's no guardrail proposed in this plan. So if they come up out of those woods, three houses, two trails, straight up to James. If they come up those woods, they are on the road. I wonder how many deer are hit on James. I think that would be a really interesting statistic. I would venture to say there's a lot. I know there's a mama that get three babies and now she has two. I don't know where that baby was hit, but that baby's gone. Our kids also walk to school and they walk to the swim club or ride their bikes or whatever. I'm sure everybody in this room is aware that my brother was hit at that intersection without, as it currently is, when he was directing traffic during Moyer's construction. So that intersection in itself is already unsafe. I don't know that anybody's been hit at Mayfield or that there's been any safety concern at Mayfield, you know, in contrast to that. We have, just recently on Sweetbrier, had a lot of construction in the backyards and living houses, even numbered houses as a result of the water district's work. I have done a lot of hillside litigation as an attorney. I did one on Midwest, in fact. And in knowing what I know about hillslides, I told all of my neighbors, this is not the way that I normally operate, but take pictures of your backyards now from multiple angles, take pictures in the future because they cut a lot of trees back there, the water district did. That's on their downhill side. Now we're going to, this proposal would have to take down trees on their uphill side on the way up to James. I think it really would affect the stability, I'm not a geotechnical engineer, I'm an education major that went to law school, but I think that it would really affect the stability of that hill. In addition to that, it affects my neighbors' right to privacy and right to point enjoyment of their houses. After the water district came through, a lot of them have lights from Moyer that shine right in their bedroom windows in the back of their houses. That did not happen when they hit the trees. Obviously, we want Moyer to be safe, we want it to be well lit. Nobody's complaining about that. I think somebody said, can we just tweak that like a little, turn it in a different direction? But, you know, they already have lost a lot of privacy from that project. In addition to that, some of my neighbors say they own eight feet to James, some say two feet. I haven't looked at the plat, I don't have any interest in looking at the plat right now, but it's going to take some taking of their property in order to move the entrance to James because if we take the two houses, the one that Sun Country is doing now and the multifamily house, then either there's going to be a significant dog leg to get over to the existing James, or if you're going to go straight down James, you're going to have to take my neighbors' backyards. They're going to oppose you vehemently on that. And that's going to get real expensive. The Target project put me through college because my dad did that eminent domain work. It's expensive. The, in addition to that, I think there's going to be a lot of parking issues. There's not a whole lot of land down where, there is no parking area now, but there's not a whole lot of land out where the sand volleyball courts are. If we're going to put parking down there, that's not going to be enough, especially with added awesome things at the park. And so more people are going to go to the park, less parking on Mayfield, it's going to go up James, it's going to go to the swim club. They already have parking lot issues at the swim club and then it's going to come up to Sweetbrier. The city already has had parking issues with Sweetbrier when Moyer did the construction. And then, you know, the plan right now is essentially to make the Madonna intersection a four-way intersection. There's no stop sign proposed, which I think is a humongous problem. I think that's a safety problem, but then if there's a stop sign, it's a humongous problem for Sweetbrier. It is really hard for us to get in and out of our street at many times during the day, mostly school traffic, but many times during the day. One of our neighbors timed his trip home from the Y. One of our neighbors timed his trip home from the Y, and he actually timed his trip from Wilbur's to the top of Sweetbrier, and it has taken as long as sixteen minutes for him to get from Wilbur's to Sweetbrier. Put a stop sign a hundred feet in front of that, and that sixteen minutes is thirty minutes for him to get from the Y to his house on Sweetbrier at eight o'clock in the morning. He should just go fifteen minutes later, but, you know, I think it's a traffic issue. Then, in addition to that, I think our gateways are already poorly maintained. I've got one up in my office, there's one at the end of, you know, down by DP. They're weedy, I think before they maintained. I don't think we need any more, we can't take care of what we've already got. The minor league, I think the cross-country route would have to get changed if we put a cul-de-sac at the end of May, at the end of Mayfield. And in addition to that, you know, this presentation said that the city wants to be sensitive to natural areas, but you're taking, the plan would take a lot of that beautiful culvert that is in my neighbor's backyard, and it has a lot of nature animals, et cetera, in it. So those are the interests of my neighbors. I have a child with Down syndrome. He's eight years old. The city is wonderful to him, the police, the EMTs, everybody is wonderful to him. He's very impulsive, he has ADHD as well. I am really, really, really worried about his safety if that becomes a major threat here. We bought our house with three interests, and one of them was approximately to the swim, to the swim club in Moyer, and I knew that Sweetbrier was super safe. We actually are down further on Sweetbrier because we wanted to be down, we wanted to be away from Highland Avenue. We were on Custis and we were two posts to twenty-seven. So, you know, but, I do a lot of disability advocacy as well. One of the things that worries me about accessibility is the two inclines. So, I'm not just talking about wheelchairs, motorized wheelchairs. I'm talking about people with motor impairments, I'm talking about people with vision impairments, people with organizational impairments. To get down the slope by the Walden Myers house, and then to get up the significant slope to the current shelter at Highland Park would be really, really difficult for somebody with one of those impairments that I talked about. In addition, the parking issue, it's gonna be, you're gonna have to take some space for accessibility for parking that really diminishes the space for parking down at the bottom of the hill where the sand volleyball courts are. I don't see any mention of ADA accessibility in any of the new trail and trailhead proposals. A lot of parks do, you know, like the first mile is ADA and scroller accessible. I don't see that anywhere. So, one of the first pages of the thing that's online is we want to keep the city ADA accessible and make it even more ADA accessible. And I don't see anything in the entire plan, not only on James, that is saying, oh, we want to be more accessible for people with disabilities. And certainly even in the park, the play structure idea, that could be something. I know Summit View Park in Bluewich is a wonderful example of ADA accessibility and therapeutic, you know, to take it beyond just being accessible and to be like super top notch. They are super top notch and they're therapeutic benefit to that amazing park up there. I also saw that the city has an interest in maximizing the benefit of existing uses and kind of co-hosting things with the school systems. That was the example in the presentation, but the planning term is apparently co-locating with other organizations like the schools. That really bothers me as a Moyer parent and as a parent of a person with a disability because of the sidewalk and that incline issue from Moyer. One of the things that I don't think we're supposed to say expressly, but that I know as a parent, is that Moyer's safe place for active shooters, for some people, is somewhere in that vicinity. So we're talking kids that have to get out of Moyer very quickly and very stressful circumstances, and I really worry about that incline and the traffic and, you know, everything else. Obviously, police would be there to help with that, but that is a significant concern that close to Moyer. So I think in closing, my, my, I think it's important to say it's not the most probably well-received thing, but our feeling on Sweetbrier, and my feeling as a resident with the interest that I have, is that the folks from Mayfield kind of loaded, front-loaded their advocacy, and that we knew nothing about this. And so, we feel as though a lot of the research that was taken and a lot of the information that was gathered was front-loaded from the folks that live on Mayfield. So I think some of the numbers and some of the statistics that you have used to make this plan are skewed because Sweetbrier wasn't here and didn't talk about it. So, thank you. That was a lot, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Caitlin Nagel. This is my husband Clint, and we live at three seventeen Highland Avenue. So we just purchased our house the end of May, and we would be the home that would be right next to the proposed road. You tear down the two houses that are on Highland right by James right now. So, we definitely kind of took offense to the statement that there would be no residential impact moving now though. We moved here because we wanted to be in Fort Thomas. We felt like it's a safe area. We just had a daughter in July. So we felt really good about that. We loved our back daughter. We've got all those trees there, we've got another sidewalk in the front, and the plan kind of seems like you're gonna plow down the two houses next to us, one that is almost done being renovated, looks like a really nice house at this point. And you're gonna put this road there with access to the park. We would not have purchased our house if we knew that this was happening, if this happens. Our property value's gonna go down. I'm not gonna be safe letting my daughter even in our then-stand-back daughter. And for me personally, it seems like the people on Mayfield, again, kind of piggyback on what Ashley said, may have front-loaded this, knew nothing about this when we purchased the house. We just got that out just recently, this is part of the plan. And when they purchased their homes, they knew that they were on a street with access to the park. So I can understand how they frustrated maybe with parking, accessibility to that and things like that, but we didn't buy our house to be right next to the park like that. So, that's just gonna be a big disappointment for us. I don't know how we're gonna handle it from this point and moves forward, but that's not somewhere we're gonna wanna stay and live if we've gotta worry about safety issues and things, any amount of traffic that's gonna be going by our house.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm here, I'm standing, so I apologize. Now, this is like the least comfortable thing that I've ever done, because I like to come into a place, settle in, be political, be nice, get to know everybody. So, be three months in, and for me to stand and say this is highly uncomfortable. But coming from Hamilton Fairfield area, I grew up there, all this details, all this and that, I understand it, but the big thing to me is that you promote and advocate in your mission statement, it's all about community, safety, kids, and we all know that children are that, and especially as a person that works in education. So for me to, to raise a daughter in a place where it's quickly gonna be redeveloped, accentuated, and it's not gonna be what we had as an ideal situation, is something that, it is hurting me, and I'm not happy about it. And I was always told that Fort Thomas is where you wanna raise a family, and if we do, I'm one of those people that'll be involved, I'll be involved in the community, I'll coach sports, I'll, I don't know, I just like being a part of things, if that makes sense. That's why I coach, coach sports and I work in education. So, appreciate your time and thank you.
Caitlin Nagel and Clint Nagel.
Kevin, I wanted to piggyback one, one more time on, on their thoughts. My neighbors on Madonna, I live at Madonna sixteen. I'm not gonna repeat anything that Ashley or Clint or Caitlin said, but they all oppose that project as well. On a positive note, I think that the thing that excited me the most was the development along Rowley, some of the entry points there. I think that would be a really good thing to kind of see what we can find and implement there.
I'm Judy Alessandro, and I live on North Port Thomas Avenue. And I would just like to, once again, go with the James Avenue thing. I grew up.
Talk quite as loud and it's being recorded, so, for a minute, so.
Okay, I am, I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Thomas, and when I grew up, I grew up on Mayfield Avenue, and I lived in the house right next to Highland Park, on the left-hand side. My daughter and her family live there now. I have not heard much until just lately about this again. I know this Mayfield thing came up years ago, and it was kind of drawn, and nobody has said more about it. However, I really don't know that they, their girls are grown now, so everyone's going to college. I don't think it makes a much difference to them as it did when the girls were little. But, my big thing with this is if you go and bring a road down and bring it up into the park, I have heard it's gonna end between the bathrooms and the shelter. That's gonna cut into the cross-country course. I know some people might think that's funny, but that retains hundreds of kids every week in the fall, where you have kids from kindergarten through the twelfth grade running the elementary races and everything. And the reason I'm upset about this is my son is a cross-pendant kid to Highland. So you might really wanna think about that, because that's really gonna impact a lot of kids. When you're talking kindergarten, first, second, third graders, you do not let those little kids run in rivers or roads. So, that's all I can say.
I get your first name?
Judy.
Judy, no, thank you. On that, they were talking about a new entrance on the Armory, and something about recalling back there the best home. Isn't this on the national board registry or they can't mess around with the old ones over there, or are they kind of? That's not what I need to hear. So you didn't say, what do you mean, on Armory? Yeah, I think it's one of the possibilities. So, I had, you're seeing that through the, 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 the,
Hi, I'm Tim Williams, a liberal top-level board, Jason's Central Business District. And just wanted to commend first the planning commission and your consultants and all the residents that have been involved in this proposal. Reading through it, I think you did a great job. I think that overall, it's a very comprehensive plan, a very comprehensive, comprehensive plan. Martin, just a follow-up. But, but I think it's well thought out. Obviously, there's some minor issues in there. And reading through it, as someone that lives close to Central Business District, there were a few things that I was concerned about that, you know, I think you addressed, and I was mentioning this to Rob. First, related to the district, you talked a lot about keeping the scale appropriate. And I think that's very, very important, because if you lose the scale with height or width or the architecture of what you have down there, you're gonna lose a lot, which really important makes that a great business district, and really a heart of the community. And I've seen a lot of communities that have lost that through redevelopment, new buildings coming in, even too high, the scale is wrong, the architecture is wrong, and they really lose what they have. The example I use is if you go down Monta Street, there's a certain texture to that street, as opposed to the new apartment buildings that are near the left, where you walk along that street edge and there's no contact. So what we have downtown, hopefully, will preserve, I think it's very, very important. And the last thing is, in some communities, sometimes lose an appropriate connection between high-density and low-density uses that are distant, adjacent to one another. In Central Business District, as you know, we have a lot of low-density that is immediately adjacent to this area. So, is it, as it's a redevelopment, I think it's very important that we consider how that impact of high-density relates to low-density, and that we do it correctly. Because otherwise, you're gonna be in a position where you have areas that will either suffer or people will start selling those properties, and then you've got the sort of downhill slide. So, just things that I noticed as I was reading through there, but again, I want to give the planning commission everybody's work on that, because as a resident, I think that you did a great job on something personal about, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I don't think we have any other comments. We're gonna close the public hearing at this time. I do feel like I don't make the comment to you, this is a, I mean, it's not a, it's gonna be. If you saw, there's a lot of factors. Money is the bottom line of a lot of them, but there's no guarantee that any of this is gonna happen in my life. But you try to move forward. You have to make some plan updates like every five years, or one of those extensive. It'll be a goal for down the road. We don't know if it's gonna have a connection to the park, if it's gonna have a connection. It all comes in the detail, there's plenty of public areas down the road on that. Once a real plan is developed to do that, the engineers do their part. Yes, you can build on the hillside or whatever, you gotta, this property, if you have to take any property, what's it cost? And then we'll get it back, the plan will be here for that part. Remember, it's just a concept, but it's not, it's gonna happen. So, thanks for your, no more additional comments from you as the public. We're gonna talk a little bit here, we've got more comments. This is an extensive document, if you've read it online, a lot of pages, it comes out, but it's a big thing. So, I think what we're gonna do is basically, this is gonna be discussed on our September fourteenth. We, we don't even know if we'll approve it then, it may go to another one. It's a large effort. So, basic document is take a motion right now to close the hearing, and basically, then we will discuss this thing, meeting, which is over, we'll get to say in the building next hour. You're welcome. Thank you. We thank you for your attendance. Hope you learned about the process.